Alright, so we're gonna do a little study session today. Doing it live, so I'm gonna see if we get a few viewers on and then we will, you know, get it going. So what I want to do today is we're gonna build another, I know we've been doing this a little bit lately, but I want to go ahead and build another solution in PO solver. And this time I'm gonna do one where I defend versus the out of position 3 bet. The reason is because I've actually had a bunch of hands where this has happened. And hold on, I've got a fucking terrible allergies. Oh god. This might be how I die. That's okay, that's okay, this is how I want to die. Okay, so we're gonna use this giant PokerStars database since, you know, that's what we have right now. And I'm gonna do some range research. I was helping one of my students out, they were building some stuff yesterday. And they found a few ways to make the solutions a bit smaller, which made sense, and I think I've mentioned before. But yeah, so my thing is I want to be a little bit better against some of the regs at my limit. So we're gonna look at the regs ranges, which should be fairly clear. And then we are going to build a post-flop solution, run it on like, meh, you know, like 25 flops, and then see if we're doing it, if we're getting the right answer that we want. So what I actually want to look at is, I think versus button makes the most sense, right? The 3-bet versus the button open, that's probably the most common, right? So basically the button, la-la-la-la, 3-bet. So the button 3-bets. Fold to 3-bet, call 3-bet. 3-bet. Okay, so the button. Small blind versus button 3-bet is 13%, and the big blind is only 9%. So it's worth it probably to do both of these. So, but let's look at small blind versus button. I'm not gonna do the sizings because I want to get the most accurate range. So we're gonna do small blind versus the button, and we're gonna look at the 3-bet range, okay? So what I'm going to do, alright, I'm gonna copy 1 color, 1 cell equals 1 weight. Now, because I'm doing it against regs, I'm actually gonna take out all of the sort of what looks like rando hands, because they don't actually matter, and I'll explain what I mean by that in a minute. So, um, yeah, these are basically very similar. So I'm gonna go ahead with this solution. And we are going to be the in-position player, and we're gonna be facing the out-of-position player. So the out-of-position range I want to use, first of all. Alright. That doesn't look right. Alright, copy 1, cell equals 1 weight. And then paste, there we go. But what I want to do is I want to take out the zero hands, or like the hands that are only being used once. So I'm gonna go through and get like the 1, 2, and 3. So basically, anything that looks like it's garbage, we're gonna take out. And just kind of clean it up a little bit. So like the 10-9, I'm seeing like 9 of those. That's pretty rare, um, but like 9-8, I'm only seeing, I'm seeing even less of. So let's take out anything that's happening less than 1%. So anything that's .00. Or anything that doesn't even round to 1%. Yeah, 3, 2. Ace 4 actually has 12, so that does round to 1%. This rounds to 1%. Ace 7 does not, ace 8 does. Okay, so that's all those, those are all 2%. Okay, .04. Uh, I mean, this only has 2, although I guess 2 combos. .0049, .02, .04949. Yeah, all these. Queen 2. 4925, 4949. Jack 6 has 3, so yeah, anything that has 3, like the 9-4. The 5, the 6-3. The 9-4. 8-4. Okay, that seems pretty good, right? Now, I know that we've actually reduced the stat value by, well, I'm not sure. I mean, the stat value looks like 13%, but this is the range of that 13%. We can actually see that the, we're getting the 90% on aces, meaning that, yeah, 552 times aces are raised, but there's some small frequency that they're called. Again, it depends on the numbers and whatnot as to when we do or don't get this, but this looks pretty good. Let's see, jack, yeah, so I think this looks pretty good. Uh, we've eliminated all like the sort of 1 and 2-hand combinations. So if it happens once or twice, we've eliminated it. Why is ace 7? Ace 7 has 7 combinations. Yeah, shoot. Let me go ahead and clone this. Uh, or actually, let me go ahead and save current range. Pool ranges, we'll do, this is stars, 50 no limit regs. Uh, small blind 3-bet. Versus button, RFI. Save. Okay, so pool ranges, we got the, okay. Now, let me see what the frequency on the ace 7 was. Copy 1 cell equals 1 weight. .0057, okay. So this is going to be .0057, and we're gonna make it ace 7, okay. Fix that. Okay, so everything else I think looks good. I mean, we did get rid of some of the 3 combos of like king 8 off, queen 9. Um, so yeah, we got rid of a couple other, but the 3 and 4-hand combos of those, I don't think are a big deal. Basically, the more we can eliminate, this king 7 has 4 actually. But the more we can eliminate, the more accurate the range is. Or sorry, the easier the solve will be. So if we, okay, so let's go ahead and save current range. Okay, so if we go ahead and put that as the out-of-position range, then we're gonna put our um, our munker 6-way versus 3-bet. Button versus small blind, we're gonna put our flattening range in, okay? Now, yeah, I mean, this is, I'm just gonna leave this, but realistically, it'd be nice if we could just round this to whole numbers. But yeah, anyway, if we go ahead and, hey, average male, how's it going? If we go ahead and estimate the tree size, right? So we got 3258 for the tree size on this one. And we're doing 100 no limit, which we should probably do 200 no limit. Uh, so this would be 180 and 44. So if you open to, so for 200 no limit, let's say that we open to, realistically, I think probably people are opening to 5 at 200 no limit, more realistic, right? Like, so they open to 5, get 3-bet to about 20. By the small blind, so there's, so there's 7 in the pot, right? With the 5 and the 7, so 5 plus, uh, 2, or sorry, 5 plus 3. Okay, there's $8 when we open. And then somebody, the small blind, 3-bets it to, let's say, 20. So basically, we add 19 to the pot, because, right? And so it's a $27 pot, so 27. And each player has minus $20, so 180 in their stack, so that makes sense. So they have 180 in their stack, and the starting pot should be 27. Sorry. And then I would call, so it'd be 40. I think 44 was probably right. So basically, it's 20 plus 20 plus 2, so 42. That's the big blind, and then the button call and everything. Okay, so this is a $42 bet. Now, what we're gonna do is the, because the out-of-position player is gonna be c-betting a lot, I'm not gonna force c-bets, I'm gonna let them decide whether or not to c-bet. So again, the tree's 3400, um, which is, you know, a decent-sized tree. It is a 3-bet pot though, so I think the, we'll keep the raise sizes fairly small. We will let them pick 3-bet sizes. I tend to, in position, um, default to either, like when my opponent checks to me, I usually just bet most of the time, except on certain flops. And I use a 50% sizing, so either I could try to study how to actually balance that, or I could just sort of study for this one, my default strategy, which I think I'm gonna choose to do that. And then if we estimate the tree size again, it goes down to 2920. So basically, the smaller the tree, the faster we can solve it. Now, I think these bet sizes are good for a 3-bet pot. Um, but yeah, when he checks, I'm either going to don't 3-bet. Oh, this is taking the 3-bet option out, which is good, because I'm the pre-flop caller, and that eliminates, you know, a, um, a play that I won't ever be making, right? In position, I'll almost never be raising. Actually, how much does that? So it goes from 2920, hold on, build tree. 2920, and then if we click the don't 3-bet, build tree. Not sure if you have to do one or the other first. 29, yeah, so it doesn't appear to change the size all that much, so I guess we'll just leave it in. So we'll let this person have a 33, a 50, and a 100 sizing, which I think makes sense. And then, uh, yeah, so let's go ahead and solve for a flop that we think we know pretty well. Um, which is the ace 7, or the king 7 deuce. I think we know the king 7 deuce flop like the back of our hand by now. So we're gonna go ahead and build that tree. And I'm gonna try to say go, and we'll give it a minute. So yes, this is PO solver. And we're using ranges that we derive from HandToNote. And the reason I want to do this is I want to get a very good idea of how I should be defending my 3-bets versus regs. So I want to do, um, I actually want to save the current solve, and I'm gonna actually make a new, my computer's gonna be going a little slow right now, but I want to make a new folder. Yeah, really slow. And I'm gonna call it, um, versus pool strategies. Okay. And we're gonna put these guys in here. No, I'm using, well, kind of, I'm using HandToNote. So HandToNote is a piece of software that I'm an affiliate for. And basically, I put a 5 million hand database through HandToNote. And now I'm studying the actual ranges that regulars 3-bet with. So this is a regular's 3-betting range versus a button open, okay? They are calling with all those blue hands, and they're raising all the green hands. So I can actually copy that range, and then put that into PO solver and get a very exact, you know, answer for what they're doing. So hero, this is the it's not, it's not sort of typical, it's like exactly what they're doing. So it's not, this isn't a guess, this is actually showing over a 5 million hand database exactly what regulars are 3-betting. Like, these are the exact hands that they used. So it's like very precise. Okay, hero, this is the hero button, uh, so hero button flat versus pool. Small blind, pool regs. Small blind 3-bet. So this is hero button flattening versus the pool regs, small blind 3-bet. So I'm gonna save that, and now we have these pool strategies. So this is, um, yeah, this is this right here. And we can see that this is exploitable for 9.0 right now, so we're not quite there yet. I'm gonna let it solve for a little bit longer. In the meantime, we can talk about U-Rounders Club. For anybody who hasn't signed up yet, I highly recommend getting in on it. We've got, we're up to about 5 members, I think. So we've got a few, uh, yeah, we've got 5 members. And, um, yeah, as soon as we get up to like 10 or 12, I'll start, I'll, I'll start running games. So I can build any kind of games that you guys want. I can build sit-and-goes, MTTs, uh, very low buy-in cash games with very low rake. I'm probably, the default rake is probably gonna, maybe to promote it, I'll start it at like 2% with 3 big blind cap. Eventually, it'll probably go to like the 3% with 3 big blind cap, but it's still gonna be incredibly, it'll depend on the limit, right? The lower limits will have lower rake, um, so that you can still have a good win rate. Um, but yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna keep it really low to promote the room. And, uh, yeah, I'll just have to see how expensive it actually is to run the room, but I'll be very transparent about how much I'm making and all of that, so that you guys know, and you know, how, how fair the, uh, the deal is in the room. But yeah, if you want to sign up for that, just go to pp poker.net, and then you'll go and search for the club number using this little magnifying glass. You'll type in the club number, 507187, and then you'll, you know, And you hit join, and it's gonna say like you're already a member of this club or something. Yeah, so it'll say, yeah, please enter verification information, and then you can say, you know, who you are or whatever, and type in hello, you know, whatever information you think would be relevant. I am hell, I'm U-Rounder hell. Not quite what I was going for. You joined this club already, okay. So anyway, that's how you join the club. And, uh, yeah, guys, get in, because, uh, in a couple weeks, I'm gonna start traveling to casinos and trying to recruit live, like 1-2 poker players, that's gonna be my goal. We're starting me, and I'm gonna work my way down the coast, and we'll, we'll see how far I get. Uh, I heard some stuff about players using solvers in real-time at the tables, but I would think that would take too long. Not if they already have the solutions built. So, I mean, yeah, it's, I'm not exactly sure how they do it, but I, yeah, I'm on certain sites, I'm sure you can have, um, I think PokerStars does a pretty good job to prevent it, but as far as other sites go, I'm not sure. But yeah, I mean, if you could program something to pull up the right solution based on the situation, it's possible. They don't actually solve it while at the table, they have all the solutions already built, and they're pulling up the solution while they're at the table. So yeah, there's players that do that. It's fairly complicated, and I wouldn't worry about it. I don't think at, you know, 50 and 100 no limit, all that many players are doing stuff like that. I would worry about that more at like, you know, 2K no limit and things like that, if I had to guess. Alright, so once we get down to a low, you know, percentage, we can actually start looking at the solution. And because we, we really need to keep in mind who is like, like, um, when you look at GTO solutions, it's, uh, you're just looking at positions. But when we're doing these solutions, we're actually, um, we're actually looking at the opponent versus us. So it's not, it's not, um, hit strategy. This doesn't look right. It shouldn't be 25% across the board. Oh, we need to click root to update it probably, there we go. So we can see that basically what we're, what we're looking at here, and let me see if I can get this to fill the hole. Perfect, okay. So what we are talking about here is now we're looking at the opponent's strategy, okay? Uh, it's, yeah, it looks complicated, it's really not that bad. Again, we'll click the, the root node to make sure we're updated. Basically, you just look over here on the right, and you see that, okay, so on a king 7 2 board, right? Our opponent should be checking about 2% of the time. Now, you'll notice that like when I'm, you know, the out-of-position 3-better on this board, I'm betting 1/3 pot like 100% of the time. Why is that? Well, because we're allowed to bet 1/3 pot 100% of the time. However, we're probably, oh yeah, we can't do that until the solve is done, but we're probably leaving a little bit of EV on the table, because there's some hands that actually really want to bet bigger. They want to bet half-pot on this flop. So you'd have to then go and look, okay, well, what are the hands that want to bet half-pot? There's about 27 combos that want to do that. It looks like, you know, some queen 10s kind of want to do that. King, queen, like king, queen basically is the big one, right? King, queen is very interested, although still, it's mostly betting small. It's just bouncing it out a little bit. Um, pocket 2s really like betting bigger. So like that's, maybe that's it, right? Maybe I would just say, okay, well, when I have pocket 7s, or like pocket 2s and pocket 7s, or pocket 2s and, you know, maybe that's it. Maybe I bet half-pot with pocket 2s here, and king, queen, no backdoor. Ace, king, no backdoor, something like that. So ace, king of hearts would be the, the no backdoor draw. Alright, hold on a second. Oh my god, holy shit. Oh, guys, good news. We're officially out of our downswing, so I don't think I mentioned this yet. Um, yesterday I played some tournaments, but, uh, I was also playing cash games, and I kind of went and did the math today on how we did in those cash games. I didn't really realize at the time, because basically, um, because of the, you know, totaling everything up or whatnot. It's hard to tell. However, here's where our downswing started, on the 16th. So we've been downswinging for half a month, which is kind of brutal. But, um, yeah, if we look at this, we had ironically 277 is the day that, the session last night that took us out of it. About 3 hours on average of 3 tables, and you can see the sum down here, well, you can't see it, but it's $29.77. So we're finally out. Um, so we'll play today and hopefully hit some new highs on the challenge, which is exciting. Alright, so these solutions go a little slower when I'm like streaming and, you know, have a million other things going on. But, uh, let's see how this looks. Okay, looks like it's at 1.6%, which is a lot, right? Like we, 1.6% wouldn't normally be enough to, um, to call good, but I'm gonna go ahead and stop it so that we can explore it a little bit. Now, what I'll do is if I decide that, okay, this script is good, this is running how I want it to, I will then generate a script. I'll generate 25 or 184 flops or something, and then I'll run it overnight. Now, I've got the timeout at like 3600, which I think is, um, like 15 minutes. Uh, my student said he saw something that was like 6,000, so. And then we need to make sure that we don't save it into the same folder. So I'm just gonna kind of delete that out so that I don't accidentally save it there. I need to make sure that I rename it. But yeah, .25% of pot accuracy, 6,000 second timeout, and I don't have it take any break. Um, I guess you could do like a 5-second break or whatever, let the processor cool down, but meh, whatever. Um, I'm not sure that that's needed, but it doesn't add that much time, 10 times 184. Uh, divided by 60 seconds, alright, divided by 60 seconds, so it's an extra 30 minutes for the whole solve. So I mean, it's, you know, it's a little bit of time, but when you're solving overnight, 30 minutes isn't a huge deal. So anyway, let's go look at this solution. So now we've got the actual solution, we can look at the strategy. Again, we see that on king 7 deuce rainbow, um, our opponent can basically bet 100% of their range. Like, right, this may normalize to actually being 100% on this board. Especially when we let them use smaller bet sizes. If we only let them use pot, it would be like some sort of mixed strategy, they wouldn't just bet pot 100%. But because they can bet a third pot, it's gonna be fairly frequent. Now, um, I may not have set the right rake. 5% up to 3 chips, okay, that is correct. That is like standard, although at 200 no limit on a, um, on global, it might be higher. It might be up to like 350 or $4. So the rake may be slightly higher on global, I gotta check what 200 no limit rake is, but. So, okay, we, we get this, and we see that, alright, well, they can bet a lot if they use a small sizing, but we know that a lot of players will actually bet half-pot pretty frequently in 3-bet pots. So what we then need to do is actually study not only how we defend our exact range, which we only fold 31% against this, um, strategy. It appears we're also raising here 11% of the time, which is really high, I would not expect that. Hands like king, jack become a raise, um, and we're raising to $52, so they bet 14, and we're gonna raise to 52, which is, seems like a really big raise, I would normally raise to like, I don't know, 40, well, I would normally be raising like 28, you know, doubling it or something, but this is actually saying we can raise pretty big, we can raise to 52, um. So again, it's a reflection of this strategy that we then, again, against a, um, small bet, are gonna be raising a lot. Against a larger half-size bet, 21, we're raising less, only 5% of the time. So depending on the bet size they use, that's going to affect how often we are actually raising, if we choose to raise ever here. I'm not really sure that we, I'm not sure we necessarily need to raise, we could have eliminated that strategy, but, um, yeah, I guess if it's higher EV, then we should do it. So now I've got strategy plus EV, so I can actually see the EV of like king, jack. And, yeah, it looks like calling is slightly higher EV in most of these. Raising, yeah, so calling is definitely higher EV, ace, king offsuit, calling is still higher EV, except for the ace of spades, king of hearts. So basically, what is it, the heart, the king of hearts for some reason? Oh, okay, because there's no backdoor. There's no backdoor draw, might have something to do with us blocking the hands of his that are, that don't have. He's gonna have like more backdoor flush draws when we have the king of hearts than when we have like the king of diamonds, so it makes raising a little bit better. So anyway, you can see there's not that many that are really high EV. Even the deuces are slightly higher EV to call than to raise, so that's why like I don't really see a need to raise most of these. I'm guessing maybe some of the bluffs are higher EV to raise, hmm. I'm guessing maybe some of the bluffs are higher EV to raise, hmm, not really seeing that either. Something has to be, right, like something has to actually, so EV, um, in position, so what is? So the kings, the queens. Can't find a single hand really that's higher EV to raise. Which is why I don't really know that we need to have that as part of our strategy, alright, we're like not picking up a, there's not like some hand that picks up a ton of EV by raising. Um, ace-five, okay, wait, wait a minute. Yeah, none of these are picking up anything significant. Okay, so ace-four of spades, right, ace-four of spades is a little better. Ace-four of diamonds, ace, okay, so the ace-four, maybe the ace-three, I'm guessing, are better to, to raise with. So, yeah, so again, like, PO might be adjusting the entire strategy based on the fact that these are slightly higher EV to raise with. I'm not sure why it's necessarily doing that, but stuff like that is, you know, way more advanced. Anyway, um, what's more interesting to look at is just the overall defending range, the fact that we're folding only thirty-one percent versus the small bet and how we need to defend. So what are, you know, okay, first of all, we don't fold any pairs. Uh, well, actually, that's not even true, even against this one-third, we can have a mixed strategy with our threes, fours, fives, and sixes, or we fold some of them, right? So anything between threes, fours, fives, and sixes, we can fold some of. Again, this is a reflection of how tight the opponent's range is, not, and how small the bet size is. Um, more how tight the opponent's range is than anything else. I picked one, yeah, yeah, um, maybe, yeah, I may have misspoke, but yeah, we're on one-third right now. So, da-da-da-da-da. Yeah, we can see that versus one-third, we can only fold thirty-one percent, we really need to defend a lot here, and these are the hands we need to defend with. So we can kinda study exactly what we're defending with, we're of course never folding a king, we're not even folding, you know, ace-jack of hearts is a mixed strategy here, right? It's clearly higher EV to call with ace-jack of hearts than fold. You know, the backdoor flush draws are all calls, you know, these are all gonna be calls with the backdoor flush draws. And then ace-nine, it starts to get, you know, a little closer, and we can basically just fold. Right, be, yeah, that's true, so, yeah, anytime that there's a raising range, you have to defend less. The frequency of defense is going to be less, so the more you raise, the less you have to call. Um, sort of a basic theory concept, but yeah, that's true. If you, if you only ever call, you need to call more often. If you call and raise, you don't need to defend as high a frequency. So if we got rid of the raising range, we would probably go down to folding only maybe twenty-seven percent or twenty-six percent or something. Um, and then calling with everything else, because we would just have to. But when we raise, um, we eliminate some of the opponent's EV by pushing his hands to zero EV, yada, yada, yada. Anyway, so then we study that, and then we pull up the half-pot sizing, and we study that. Okay, now we see that, yes, we're gonna raise less frequently, it's gonna be the similar hands, different frequencies, and then we are calling less often. So now threes is like basically a fold, fours and fives and sixes basically are folds. They are minus EV to call with for the most part. So you basically can see that, you know, okay, well, depending on how my opponent bets, I should be defending differently. Then, you know, you have those sort of volatile opponents that just sort of pot it, and you can see that, alright, well, we can basically fold anything that's not, you know, top pair or very strong backdoor flush draws. Um, but even against pot, right, it's a pretty massive mistake to fold. Right, because with like ace, queen of spades, diamonds or clubs, you're making a big mistake folding on the flop here, because even against a pot-sized bet, it's, uh, a four-big-blind mistake, which is huge, right? A four-big-blind mistake is like a huge mistake to make across one street. Now, not only that, but we're also talking about not a GTO range, this is a really tight range. So we're actually talking about a very tight pool range, you know, this is only, right, this range that they're three-betting is only nine percent from the small blind, which this is the actual range of hands that the pool is doing this with. So it's a pretty damn tight range, right? Like, to, to give you an idea of the comparison, you know, when I'm three-betting in the small blind versus the button, um, you can compare my du-du-du-du-du, versus two-bet, so this is my small blind versus button. Okay, it's fourteen percent, right? I'm three-betting fourteen percent compared to the pool, only three-betting like nine percent. So again, it's, uh, it's, you know, the pool is playing very tight, and it's still, even versus a pot-sized bet, we still have to defend our backdoor flush draws, you know, with ace, queen, and ace, jack, pretty much. You can see ace, queen is quite a bit stronger than ace, jack, and ace-ten, but these are still calls, like ace-ten suited with the backdoor. So the nutted backdoor, straight backdoor flush, um, combos, like really need to be defended in three-bet pots. Even ace, queen, I mean, these are much closer, but you can see even these ace, queens with the, with that, without a backdoor draw, are actually defended, all these are is an overcard and backdoor straight draw. And then, basically, yeah, the weaker pairs become pure folds, we call with any pair, any set, of course, we don't ever raise, basically. Um, and then, yeah, we'll have to defend with our pocket pairs, nines is a mixed strategy. We need to have blockers on the backdoor flush draws, I'm guessing, yeah. So we wanna have the diamond and the spade, or the diamond and the club, or the spade and the club. So any, any nine of hearts makes it not as good of a call, so that's like the, the mixer, so. Anyway, this is kinda what you can do, is you can study all these flops, you can study all the different situations. Um, what I'm gonna do is, this tree looks pretty good to me, I'm pretty happy with it, it's, uh, oh, the other thing we can look at, it doesn't happen on this flop much, but we can look at the checking, like when, when they check, we can look at our strategy for betting, uh, again, basically, because this is how the opponent should be playing when they check, I assume their range is pretty weak, and I'll bet exploitatively a lot. But we can also study against a good opponent that's checking, you know, um, decent amount of hands, how we should be, um, playing once they check the flop, so we can kinda go down both those paths and study them. Anyway, guys, I'm, I'm gonna take a break, uh, this was just a quick little update, quick study session, and, uh, I'm gonna come back in probably about thirty minutes, and I will, uh, be doing a live, you know, play session. But yeah, good news, downswing is over, we're gonna be getting back after it, we're gonna be playing fifty no limit, um, and then moving up to two hun, or, um, hundred no limit as soon as possible. Um, yeah, I may need to cash out some money today, so that'll keep us at fifty no limit longer, but we'll get there. And our win rate's looking pretty strong, actually, we're, uh, hold on. We're sitting at, from what I can tell, about a seven point six BB per hundred win rate. So, um, yeah, it's not too bad, it's not great, but it's not too bad. And, yeah, our hourly and everything is okay, so we'll go over that when we start up the next session, but we are at like twenty-five hundred in profit. Um, overall, from what I can tell in cash games, so. Uh, yeah, I hope you guys are enjoying this, and I will, uh, I'll see you in about thirty minutes, or, uh, yeah, thirty to forty-five minutes, we'll get a, uh, session going. So I'll see you guys then, bye.